Evening, everyone, and welcome to our city council meeting for Monday evening, November 4th at 6:00 PM, and I'll call the meeting to order. Would you please take your role?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Murray, here. Councilmember Gastonow, here. Councilmember Shalone, here. Mayor Protam Holly, here. And Mayor Enya.
I'm here, thank you. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Legions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
We have just come out of our closed session, and Mr. Black, do you have anything to report on a closed session?
No final actions were taken in closed session, Mayor.
Okay, and probably when we recess the meeting, we'll go back into closed session for a while. So, we will go over to acknowledgements now, and we have no acknowledgements this evening. The consent calendar has three items on it: the approval of the regular minutes, the warrant claims for October 22nd through November 4th, and the payroll reports for October 19th and October 25th. Is there a motion for approval? Or any comments?
I'll move to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved in second. Any public comment on the consent calendar? Seeing none, would you please pull the vote?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Gastonow, yes. Councilmember Shalone, yes, ma'am. Councilmember Murray, yes. Mayor Protam Holly, yes. And Mayor Enya.
Yes, thank you. Next is reports and presentations, and we have none at this time. Next is the public comment period, and this is when any member of the audience is invited to address the city council on any matter that's within the jurisdiction of the city. Comments of public interest or matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. However, the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on a future agenda. And any comments that are not at the microphone are out of order and will not be part of the public record. And after receiving recognition from the mayor, please state your name, whether you're a city or county resident for the record. And public comment is limited to three minutes. And right after we finish public comment here, we'll go to the item regarding the continuing business of the ordinance setting of the water rates, and you can speak at that time on that, or you can speak under public comment. So, is there any general public comment at this time? Yes. Come on up. Come on up. Come on up. Come on up. Please give us your name and whether you're a city or county resident. Come on up. Yes, at the podium.
My name is Kathy Christensen. I live in, actually, Smith River, but I own a 45-unit complex at 911 Pacific Avenue. When we bought the complex in 2003, our water rates were $250 a month. Last year, they went to $2,500 a month. At that time, I had to pass those expenses on to the tenants by raising the rent by $25 per unit. And hearing about another rate hike is devastating for us to, A, stay in business, and if we have to pass it along to low-income people that are already receiving HUD, 90% of the complex is on HUD, it, you know, the city doesn't have really the money to make any more increases for these tenants in order to make it affordable for other people to come and be on HUD also. So, we totally oppose this. I did not, I was really surprised by the first rate hike, but I guess I need to read the paper more. But I just wanted to say how opposed we are and how much of a hardship this is going to be, not just on us as landlords, but passing this on to the tenants.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in tonight. Is there any general comments before I go to the hearing? Yes.
I'm just going to make my comment now. Mr., or Mayor Enya, yes. I spoke to a gentleman that claims to be a longtime friend, Ronald Kungstol, Kungstol or Kungstens, something like that. Kungstol, yeah. And I met him by walking and attaining signatures for the water protest. He informed me that you led him to believe that all the residents out in the Meadowbrook area would not be getting a rate increase. Is that in true fact?
Nope. That's not true. I don't know who you're talking about.
Well, he seems to believe that's what you presented to him, and so I just wanted to bring it out there. And also, I wanted to announce that the total signatures that we've attained is 2,202. And I'm just going to gently remind you, as a friend who wants to help the city obey the law and avoid litigation, that the Constitution requires all protests to be considered at the public hearing, which means the public gets to be present and observe. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Southern. Any other general public comment before we go into the hearing? Yes, come on up.
Hello, my name is Laura Johnson. I live in 2429 Jones Avenue. I purchased the home in 2007, bought it at auction. The value has decreased by $65,000 because it was not up to par when I bought it, but I had to pay the flat price, so I've been gouged a lot. And the water bill at that time was 50, combined with sewer, was $55 a month. Now, the combined price is 84, and you intend to hike it up more. I do not acquire work in this area. I have sick relatives who live up here, and that's why I moved here, and I take care of them, and I get very little money. I have applied for work, and I will not go into that issue, but I really oppose the hikes. You're pricing people out of the county. We have saved our life savings and put it down on houses so we can live here. We're elderly people. I'm not that elderly yet, but my brothers and sisters are, and we just can't afford it. I also, you know, I know that the country says they're broke, but there are people who can channel the money to other areas, and I think that it's necessary for this community. This community is very limited in small business. I don't dare start a small business. It's very difficult. Walmart is, you know, I don't trust Walmart. So, that's my comment for that issue. I have other issues as well regarding AB 1266. It was in the paper. I'm opposed. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other general comment before I open it up for our other com--? Yes, come on up.
Yeah, my name is Tina Postaway. I live on Charles Avenue. I just moved here from Oregon, and I'm getting charged for 500 units of water, which I don't use. I live by myself, and that's $73 a month I can't afford. All right, now they're going to charge me more. I just want to say that I believe it's not right, and I live on Social Security and I live on HUD also. There's no way I can afford it. If you guys hike it, I just don't know what I'm going to do. Okay?
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other general comment before I open the public hearing? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the general comment period, and I'll open, we have a public hearing tonight, and this is to consider the proposed water rate charge increases and to receive a report on the written protest and approve the water rate study. Mr. Palazzo.
Mayor Enya, members of the council, good evening. Gene Palazzo, City Manager. I'd like to do a staff presentation going through our process to date. In this presentation, I'm going to ask Mr. Weir, our Public Works Director, and our interim Finance Director, Susan Mayer, to assist in this presentation. Just as an opening this evening, the process will be to hear a staff presentation, open up a public hearing, receive some public comment, close the public hearing, and then receive a report back from the clerk, and I believe later on, and once we're done with our staff presentation, Mayor will, you know, outline that process for the public. And to get things started, what I'd like to do is have Mr. Weir come up and just talk about, you know, a quick overview of our water system, kind of reintroduce, you know, why we're here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Gene. Thank you, members of the council. This is a pretty important night for the city. This is an important night, obviously, for our community in general. Water system is a vital component of our community, of any community. So, tonight, I'll talk quickly about the water operations and the capital improvement plan that the council has adopted in the past, and if the mayor will let me, I'll go into detail on a couple of the projects that have recently come to light. So, the water system, where do our, what do our water charges pay for? Well, the water charges, the monthly bill that you pay, which is currently around, on average, about $10 currently, and it's proposed to go up to $16 in its current rate increase, pays for only water system operations and any debt service that we have. It does not pay for anything else besides water. The water system is comprised of these basic components. We have a rainy collector well, which is our water source. We have our chlorination building, which is where we add chlorine for disinfection. We have our elevated tank, which is what provides the system pressure and stability in its operations. We have our storage tanks, which are comprised of a 4-million-gallon tank located at Washington and a 1.5-million-gallon tank located at Amador Street. We have our transmission mains, and we have our distribution mains, and then we have a SCADA system, which was installed in 1999. You'll see that most of these components of the system are still the original components. They were built in 1958. These components, we've recently had some studies completed, and they're in draft form, which I'll show you some pictures of. We're fortunate. Our system is a solid system, but as with every system, it takes preventative maintenance. And currently, right now, we don't have the finances to do those preventive maintenance, whether they be capital improvement projects or even just the day-to-day operations of the system. We're in a structural deficit. This is a picture of our elevated tank in 1958. Here's a picture of the same tank in 2013 when we did our tank inspection. You can see the trees grew up. It's been 50 years, 60 years since this tank was installed. It's the same tank. We need to do critical preventive maintenance projects on it. You'll see, this is a shot of one of the foundation bolts. This tank needs some OSHA upgrades as far as just the tank components go, so we can operate the system correctly and maintain it correctly, as well as this particular tank needs a seismic upgrade, so we can withstand an earthquake when we have it. You see, here's some of the windage rods. The reporter is preliminarily coming back that, for the most part, the tank is built well, and all it needs is just upgrades, so we don't have to tear down the tank and build a new tank for, you know, millions of dollars. We can just simply seismically upgrade this tank for about a half million dollars. This is a shot of the Amador tank. You can see that it is rusting and decaying. Again, this is a good, solid tank. It's a steel tank, but if we don't do the proper preventive maintenance, it's, we're going to have to tear down this tank and build a new one. This is a shot from inside the tank. You can actually see that, due to the corrosion, this little spot right here where you see the light coming down through, it's kind of hard to tell in the picture, this was actually a hole that was discovered in the tank. We have repaired this, but again, it's just an example of what can happen if the proper preventive maintenance isn't done. Here's a shot from the inside. You can see the rusting of it. Same story here. We just need to do preventive maintenance. There's nothing structurally wrong with this. It just needs the maintenance done. Here's a shot of the transmission mains that were installed. You've seen this picture before. This is 1958. These lines are still in service today. So, this is a synopsis of a capital improvement project that is included in this rate study, but don't be confused. These rates that are proposed are only to get the system into a stable financial situation so that we can actually go out and obtain debt financing for these projects. So, we're not looking to get the $4.5 million with this rate increase. We're going to finance this over the next 20, 25 years, you know, through the life of the project to financing. This rate increase is only to get us to that point that we can actually go out and get the debt financing that we need to complete these critical projects. One of the projects that is, that was recently brought up was the replacement of our water meters, and it was actually presented last time as a remote meter reading system. And that is correct. It would be a remote meter reading system, or that's what we're proposing anyway. The, our current water meters were installed in 1958, a lot of them. We've replaced several throughout the years, but for the most part, they're 30 to 40 years old. Water meters don't register the same. They break down just like any other system component that has moving parts. And so, what this project really is, is it's a meter replacement project, you know, just replacing a critical component of the system. Now, we are going to, or plan to upgrade with council approval to take advantage of the technology improvements that have been made. So, when we replace these meters, we're not going to replace them with the old meters where you have to actually go out, like we do right now, and reread over 50,000 meters per year by hand. That's a person in a car, and actually, it's two people in two city vehicles that go around from meter to meter, bend down, open up the box, and physically take a read. So, we're going to try to leverage technology when we replace these, so you can go to a remote meter reading system, and that way, we can better utilize our resources so that we can operate the system as efficiently and effectively as we possibly can. Another project I'd like to talk a little bit about is a SCADA system project. Our water system is currently manned and operated basically by a SCADA system, which is, stands for System Control and Data Acquisition. This is a computer system. It monitors the system and makes sure that it's running effectively and smoothly 24 hours a day, seven days a week. If it doesn't, then it calls us out, and we go and evaluate the problem, and we take care of it. This system was installed in 1999. It's a computer system that was built in 1999. It needs to be updated. Probably not many of us have computers that were built in 1999, so this is another critical project that we need to do. So, with that, it's, I just want to reiterate the fact that $4.5 million of capital improvements are really not included in the rates. The debt financing for them is, but they're going to be paid for over the next 20 years. The rate increase is simply to get us in a stable point so that we can go out and get the financing. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Susan Mayer, the interim Finance Director.
Good evening, council members. I'm here to recap for you the dire financial straits that our water system finds itself in and to recap for you the five-year financial plan that has been proposed to put the system back in a situation of financial health. We understand and appreciate that the rate increases that have been proposed are significant and represent a serious hardship for some members of our community, and so I'm here again to talk about the business case for why these rates are needed and what these new rates will pay for. The system has been bleeding red ink for years, and what you have here is a bar chart that shows the difference between the monies coming into the system and the expenses flowing out. And while the revenues fluctuate somewhat from year to year because of the timing of grants or capital connection fees, what I really want you to notice here is the expenditures, the red line, and I want you to notice how the expenditures have not increased over time. In fact, there's only one year here where the expenditures dipped, and that is the year ending in 2013, and I want to explain why the expenditures dipped in that particular year. We had planned to do water tank repairs in that year, but when we went out to bid, we found that the prices for the repair work were more expensive than the budget and the cash flow would permit. And so, we did have expenditure savings in that particular year, but these are not the kind of expenditure savings that are good for the system because it simply kicks the can down the road, and these repairs become more expensive over time. At any rate, this chart shows you that the system has been operating at a deficit for years, and now we're at the point where we are going to run out of cash, and we need to make changes. And because of that, we have put together a five-year plan to move forward. When the city council adopted the budget this year, we had thought that the operating deficit for 2013-14 was going to be in the $400,000 range, $417,000, but since then, we have learned that the revenue projections were too aggressive. We did not achieve the revenue projection in the 2012-13 fiscal year and no longer believe that we can achieve it in the current year. And the primary driver on that was the prison. The prison significantly reduced its consumption, and so the revenue dropped accordingly. And so, because of that change in revenue, we're now in a situation where the, with no change, with no action, we're looking at a $649,000 deficit in the current fiscal year, and we simply do not have the cash to sustain that kind of deficit. And just to put that in perspective, this is a fund that has an annual operating budget in the $2 million range. So, a $649,000 deficit is not just simply a nip or a tuck in the budget. This is a significant, serious structural imbalance that we need a solution. And so, city council started the process to come up with a solution last March by hiring a rate consultant to put together a long-term financial plan, the same time they also adopted a five-year CIP. So, these were actions that you took last March to start to right the ship, to start to rightsize the budget. So, our objectives for the rate study were to stay, first, just simply to stabilize the cash flow. If you look at our budget, there is not capital in the current year. The current 2013-14 year does not fund any major maintenance or significant capital improvements of the type that Eric has showed you in his pictures earlier tonight. What we're trying to do is position, generate sufficient rates to simply right the ship, stop the bleeding, and position the city to be eligible to go to the capital market to get financing to accomplish the capital improvement program that it has on the deck. Over time, again, but not in the first year, we are hoping to also slowly build an operating reserve so that you have 90 days of operating reserve to position you in case of any unforeseen circumstance. So, those are the objectives. I want to emphasize that our rate proposal is a just-in-time increase. We are only looking for enough revenue increase in the current year to balance the current year budget. In fact, the ending projection is simply $44,000, which in a $2 million budget is pretty close. There's not much room for error there. And again, just because there has been some discussion about this, I just want to emphasize again, these rates are not being set to fund the capital improvement program. They are simply positioning you to qualify, to go to the capital market, to borrow. The, there is not cash in the fund to perform the major maintenance and the repairs that are needed to sustain your system. At this point, your best hope is to be able to go to the capital market to borrow money for your program. The California Constitution has some significant protections for consumers. There are very specific procedures that must be followed for you, city council, to entertain a rate increase and to implement a rate increase. And so, recapping the process that has brought us to this public hearing tonight, on September 16th, you heard a presentation from your rate consultant that proposed the rate structure for the next five years. In addition, you passed resolutions that scheduled tonight's public hearing and also established the procedures for tabulating and receiving any protests. During September and October, staff has developed a city webpage to bring information to the customers and the residents about the rate increase. We have put forth a rate calculator that allows citizens to go on and type in their particular circumstances and their usage to see how the rate would impact them personally. We have done customer mailings, and we've also done a number of presentations to civic groups and community groups, all with the intent of educating the public about what the water system is, how it operates, how it's financed, and why they are, customers are being charged the rates that they are being charged. I'd like to talk a little bit about what happens if the rates are not implemented. There are a number of protest forms that have been circulating in our community, and they ask a very simple question: Do you, as a customer, want to protest the rate increase? The question that is not asked is what service do you not want to receive if these rates are not implemented? So, let's talk about what we do know. What we do know is that there's insufficient cash in the water fund to continue like we are. We can't continue without a change. We need cash triage in this system. And so, should the rates not be implemented, we would need to come back to you with some very difficult policy choices, and we'd need to do that in a fairly expedited manner because if you believe that water is an essential service to the community, we can't recommend that we make further cuts in the water fund budget. We need to pay for the parts, the supplies, the equipments, the lab testing, the insurance, the operators. We need to pay for the services to maintain our investment in our water system. And so, then we need to look at other options. So, as a fiscal officer, I would tell you that having looked at the budget, one of the largest line items is your debt service payment. The city benefits from a low interest, actually, a no-interest, a 0% interest loan from the state of California. On January 1st, you will owe the state $175,000. Again, on July 1st, you'll make, the second payment will be due. And so, this is a large item, and so, do we come back to you with a recommendation to look at that if these rates aren't implemented and you have no cash in the fund? Do we make a recommendation to you to look at that debt payment? And I would tell you that I think that's probably the worst long-term choice and recommendation that staff could make to you because I think that the most important policy decision you have is how to best protect your investment in the water system. You have significant investment in your tanks and your pipelines, and in order to deliver reliable, safe water to your citizens and to support the economics of the community, you need to have access to the capital market to give you the cash to finance your improvements. And this is not just about the water system. This is about your citywide credit rating. You also have a significant debt program in your sewer fund. You want to be in a position where you can enter the capital market when needed to finance either planned or emergency capital needs of the city. Defaulting on your debt would keep you out of the capital market and would not give you the access to cash flow or to the cash flow needed to implement the $4 million of capital improvements that Mr. Weir walked through with you earlier tonight. Defaulting on the debt, although it's a large line item, could be the, have the longest term impact to you in terms of your ability to finance the necessary improvements to your system. I want to talk just one more thing about debt because there has been some debate in the public about debt, and is debt a good thing or not? And I will tell you, it is a strategy. We call it a matching strategy. Debt spreads the cost of improvement over time. It allows the people who are receiving the water and the benefit from those assets to pay for it as they use it. And so, it matches. So, for example, someone coming to town in 10 years would be paying their share of the water they are receiving at that point in time. It spreads the cost of the asset over the use of the asset. It matches the cost with the benefit. It is an industry standard. It is a good business practice. However, in this case, it's more than a good practice. It is the only way that you will be able to make these improvements because you simply don't have the cash and you have such a serious backlog in your projects that that is really one of your few options to accomplish your capital program. And so, if water is an essential service and what can't cut the water budget, and if we can't recommend defaulting on the loan, although those are all policy options that we can bring to you, what other options do you have? What discretionary programs are there in this city? The city has many funds and programs. The single fund that has discretionary money is the General Fund. The General Fund is where you bring in your property tax, your sales tax, the hotel tax, and you use those to fund discretionary programs. Those programs include police, fire, parks, streets, streetlights, the swimming pool, and even community support, such as the Visitor Bureau and other economic development engines. Those are discretionary services. They are our choice, although, of course, we can argue and make this case that police and fire are certainly essential services, and even street lighting, you can make an argument is an essential service as well. What are discretionary programs? And should staff come back to you with a proposal and an option? Should these rates not be implemented to look at these discretionary programs? Because what you're looking at is having your quality of life programs in the city, whether it's the swimming pool, the parks, or these other programs, compete against a subsidy for the water fund. These are the discretionary programs that you, as a city council, have the option to look at. Now, if I were a city resident and I heard that a policy was being discussed to use my city tax dollars, the tax dollars I pay for property tax, or my sales tax, or my hotel tax, and that I was looking, that city council was considering a policy to use that money to subsidize the water system and to subsidize water system for county residents living outside the city, I would be concerned. This would be a very difficult policy choice to make because these are the city residents' tax dollars. These are the city's discretionary dollars that are to support city programs, city quality of life. The county residents and the city residents and the prison all jointly share and benefit from having one system that services all the people. It provides lowest cost for everyone by operating one system. However, if the city council is faced with the inability to increase water rates and you are faced with a difficult menu of policy options, one of them might need to be to reduce discretionary programs to maintain your essential services. My point here is that if the rates are not implemented, you will have some very difficult policy choices to make, and while the protest letters simply say, do the customers want to protest the rate increase, it will be up to staff to bring back to you and for council to give policy direction to make very difficult choices about what services will not be provided. policy direction to make very difficult choices about what services will not be provided.
Mayor, Members of the Council, yeah, as Ms. Mayor was saying, boils down to policy at this point. And I really, I really hope that everybody that signed a petition that was, you know, asked about the water rates is listening to this presentation tonight. The city has weathered the great recession of two thousand and seven. We got through that without layoffs or furloughs, you know, with our staff. We got through that without closing a lot of facilities. We've, you know, had to cut back, you know, quite a bit, but we've weathered through that. The city council has, you know, put in place a lot of measures, you know, to do some rule business budgeting decisions. You know, you hear me quite a bit saying, you know, we need to run the city as a business. I present the budget and the strategic plan to the council as business plans. You know, we have, you know, have jumped many hurdles to get to where we're at today. We're on a very good track. Without these water rate increases, without these water rate increases, and, you know, it'll have rippling effects on this community. And I do not, and we will be bringing back to the council, you know, some different options if these rate, if this rate does not pass, because there is no other choice. You know, we're going to have to look at all these other options that were presented to you this evening. So, with that said, you know, and as you kind of going back, you know, a lot of those options hit services, and it could also hit, you know, if you don't have a stable water system, you have other insurance ratings that get impacted. And there's other areas where it could increase costs to this community, and we want to prevent that. So, you know, this evening, and I would hope that the community is listening to this presentation and, you know, will help support these rate increases so we can move forward, you know, with a thriving community. May I entertain any questions of the council at this time?
Council members have any questions at this time?
I do.
Yes.
Have a quick question. Do you have a dollar figure? Should the rate increase not pass a dollar figure that we then would have to consider cutting out of the general fund if, if the council chose to, to subsidize the water?
Six hundred and forty-two thousand dollars.
And so, those would come from police, fire, pool, those services?
You know, at this point, I'm going, as, as your city manager, I'm going to sit down with our directors and our staff, and we're going to look at everything, and we're going to come back to the council with some recommendations. You know, our sole function as a government, as a city business, is public health and public safety. You know, water is part of our public health and our public safety. You know, but we have a lot of other things, such as our streets, our police, our fire, our drainage. You know, those are all part of that public health and safety. And a lot of what we do, well, you know, we're going to have to address all of that and come back to the council with some, you know, hard recommendations, and it'll be very tough decisions.
Okay, thank you.
Any comments right now? Okay, thank you, Mr. Blotto. Let me briefly describe what we'll be doing forward. We're going to, we'll, I'll open it up to comment on this in a few minutes. And can I see a show of hands how many people want to comment? A few. Okay, after the public, after we're done with the comment, let me tell you what will happen. We will, I'll, I will take a five-minute break so people that have any protest can turn them in, and then I'll reconvene, and I'll close the public hearing at that time, and they will, our city clerk will go out to start to tally those votes from around the corner, a room around the corner. And we've stressed throughout the process, all, all the protest withdrawals must be in writing, have the property address or the parcel number of the individual's property, and must be dated and signed, and only original signatures will be counted. And then after that, nothing will be accepted after the public hearing is closed, and then she will go to the duties of counting the protest. And they're based on the parcel number. Therefore, there are thirty-seven hundred and forty-one parcels, so we, so there has to be eighteen hundred and seventy-one valid parcel protests. And then the city has to identify each parcel that is actually served by the water system. And a parcel is counted as a protest based on a valid protest filed either by the record, recorded owner of the parcel, or the customer that receives the bill for that parcel, or a tenant directly responsible to pay the water bill. So they're going to, they'll do the initial counting, and while the counting, the counting is going on, we will continue our, our city council meeting, and if we finish our meeting before the, before our city clerk comes back, then we'll just recess and wait until she comes back. And if the count cannot be completed tonight, we'll adjourn to a meeting, and I'll announce that when we're going to be doing that. And depending on the outcome of the protest, we may, may take up item number five on the rate increases, depending on the outcome. And please keep in mind, the public hearing is right now, and if we take up item number five later, this is part of item number five. So your chance to speak will be now. And I wanted to thank all the people who have been involved in this process. It's true, the local government is closest to the people, and this is what local democracy is all about. And I expect all of us know far more today about the water infrastructure and Proposition two eighteen than we did before, and that's a good thing. So the public comment period is open now for the water rate, so.
Mr. Mayor, if someone has spoken during the regular public comment, they, they won't be allowed to comment again, or if I don't allow them?
They can, they can speak again if they'd like. Let's, who'd like to speak? Come on up.
That was a great presentation, by the way. Susan, Linda Sutter, I live in the county. Listen, you, you mentioned something about six hundred and forty-two thousand dollars is how much we would be in the hole. And so, my question is, is, because I, I have it confused with that January first and July first of two thousand and fourteen, one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars has to be paid towards something. Is that two different figures for something?
That's a loan that we have in the water, that we have to pay that loan.
Oh, okay. So with the, the six hundred and forty-two thousand dollars?
That's the total deficit that we have to make up.
Of the loan?
No, the total deficit of the water fund that we're in deficit.
That we would have to cut out of our general fund in this year.
And so, my question is too, is, in September sixteenth, there was, you gave six thousand dollars to get a subscription for something. Did that come out of the general fund? It was some kind, I can't remember exactly what the subscription was, but it was for one year, and you took a vote on it. Oh, but it, if you're getting a subscription to update you on some, I can't remember what it was, but the thing is, is that when you spend six thousand dollars out of the general fund for a subscription that I thought in my own mind was pretty pathetic, then we're kind of squandering away the money that could be used for things like this. That's the point I'd like to make. So, that's it.
Thank you. Who'd like to be next? Come on up.
I think they should trim it.
Please state your name again.
My name's Laura Johnson. I live in two four two nine Jones Avenue in Crescent City County. I don't live in the city. I think that I, the presentation was well done, but I think it's far too much money for this small area. I don't think that upgrading the computer is a good idea. I think you're just channeling money into another industry that is not reliable. I'm not comfortable with the new computer industry or with their financial backings. To put this county in further debt, millions of dollars for this small community, I think their estimates, they should check their estimates on who you're contracting and see if their work is worth it, because I can sand down and repair pipes. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, come on up.
Mary McGinnis County. One of the things, a very nice presentation, well done. One of the things that Susan has brought up is that it would be, funds would be taken out of the city fund. Well, as a county resident, I take part in many, many city things that happen. My taxes go towards that as well. The other thing is that the city limits are so limited here. Most people think that the city limits are much broader than what they are, and everybody that is required or forced to participate in the city water are actually county residents, so they have no choice. And to say that they would benefit from using city funds, which they pay taxes into as well, that's a little off, I think. And it seems to me that with all the grants that we get here in this county and city, I, you know, I don't know how we get so many grants for millions of dollars, isn't there a grant or something we can go out there that can sort of get us over the hurdle of this six hundred-plus thousand dollars? Might be something that we can investigate. The other thing is that, I totally went, gone. The, the main thing I wanted to say was that with all of the other significant increases that we've had, specifically the wastewater treatment plant and the seemingly wasted funds on a copper roof and things like that, it just seems to me, as this young lady says, that some of our funds are spent in ways that I wouldn't do. And I would ask that we now and in the future sort of look at those sort of things and find out if we really need that. Is it really going to benefit this community? I don't feel like I'm benefited, benefited from a copper roof. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next comment?
My name is John Stetson. I'm from the county. How dare the two of you talk about blackmailing your taxpayers?
Look, look, look this way, sir. You're speaking to us.
That's not appropriate.
Sir, you're speaking to us. Look this way.
It's not appropriate for any government official to tell the people, if you don't give us more money, we're going to cut your service. How about cutting some expenses? I didn't see any place in this whole fifty-eight, sixty-eight page report talked about any expense cuts anywhere in any operation. There's also not, obviously, any prioritization. I'm sure Mr. Weir did his proper job in determining what the city could use, should use, what it does need. The people aren't necessarily entirely opposed to that, but when you say we need to repair the piping system in the streets, we don't throw people away who were born in nineteen fifty-eight because they're old. We don't have to replace all the pipe just because it was them. What is broken? Shouldn't that be a priority repair? If it happens to be the water tank, so be it. No problem on that item. Make a business case for what you want to do. Every person who has to pay this bill has to make a business case to their family on where do they have to cut? Why does the taxpayer and everybody who's a rate payer have to cut except the city? You know why? Because of a bureaucratic approach like this that says, what we want, we call a need. And when you approve that want or that need, it's a guarantee forever that the task is going to be accomplished. Your different council people have been here different periods of time. She just displayed a chart that disproves what she told you. This is not a matter of lost revenue. The revenue has been constant, just under one and a half million dollars a year. It's on the chart. It's the expenditures that have exceeded that one and a half million dollars by more than a quarter of a million dollars per year for three years. That's the problem. There's nothing in what you've been presented that can solve that problem. There's nothing the taxpayers can do in giving you more money that will solve the problem if we work together to find answers. Maybe a conservation plan could have been put together for the people who are impoverished, which might be about forty percent of the community. You keep down, you keep down to five hundred cubic feet, we'll let you keep your existing rate.
Thank you.
Okay? I wish I had more time.
Thank you. Who'd like to speak next? Come on up, come on up. Yes.
I'm Connie Morrison, and I'm from the county. I was reading in your water contract that you said you got seven million of no interest for the water. You also got one million grant, a one million dollar grant under the Safe Drinking Water State Revolving Fund. I'm upset because I hear a half-truth, and I've been seeing fraud, all kinds of things in the paperwork that's produced. Okay, six hundred thousand dollars we don't have now because the prison, or they do go on a hunger strike, okay? Six hundred thousand dollars, that's a lot of water. Okay, so, but we had to save some money from that six hundred thousand dollars that they don't spend anymore. What's the profit on six hundred thousand? What, that's just a question I had. Yeah, we could decrease some things. And I was looking back in two thousand and nine, and you advertised for a, a person, you needed a city planner, economic development specialist. And I'm from Alameda County originally, and this person's annual salary is going to be seventy-nine thousand dollars a year. He gets two-point-five percent at age fifty-five for retirement, eight percent employee contribution. He gets his full healthcare benefits. City provides a one thousand five hundred and forty-month flexible spending account to apply towards health benefits, including medical, dental, vision, air ambulance, long-term disability, and life insurance, vacation leave, sick leave, holidays. You might want to start there, and this is a city planner. Who you guys make, or, our attorney makes a lot of money. I've read.
Do you have any other comments on the water?
Oh, yes. Okay, you're talking about what you might have. What about when the people give their last penny? What do you do? You make an ordinance saying that we're now going to take your bill and we're going to put it on with property tax and charge you more money, some penalties and some interest. At least you have a way out. You can reduce some of your expenditures. These people don't have a way out. There's nothing more to reduce. They can't even get a second job because there aren't any more jobs. You were given grants to produce jobs. That's what that grant money is for. And on and on and on. How good we got.
Thank you. Who's next? Is there another speaker?
My name is Steve O'Kowski, and I live in the county. People are really hurt around here. I spent a couple of afternoons collecting signatures from people. And you are doing so much better than these people in this town. They have no idea. I think the problem is, or in my opinion, you should have done the water system first and promoted bigger parcels and septic systems. But nobody wanted that kind of community, I guess, who has any power. The problem seems to be that the sewer plant is too big. I'm hearing from multiple sources that it's not working right. We're still being cited by the state, and, and that was one of the reasons you told us we needed the new sewer plant, and we're still paying penalties. We received a letter from, well, there's a lot of confusion about how big these systems are, and we received a letter from Stover saying that the new sewer system isn't any bigger than the old sewer system, sewer plant, excuse me. And, and now we have documents showing that you were telling the state at the same time that you were doubling the size of the sewer plant. And I can quote this. Hopefully, I can get this.
Are you talking about, this is water. We're talking about water.
This is the same utility, and there's nothing more important to this. This is the same utility, and there's nothing more important to this rate increase than the last rate increase. And this is extremely relevant history, and I just want to read three sentences, if you don't mind. And I think I can do it in our two minutes. First, in this letter from Mr. Stover dated October 12, 2007, you state, "The funds for this rate increase will provide much-needed improvements to the plant, but not new capacity." And that's from a letter that Stover wrote that you hired him, you hired Mr. Stover to write. And then we have this document of February 20, 2007, to the State Water Resources Control Board. And you state, first of it states what your consumption was. So I'll read the two sentences. "The city's current regional treatment plant has a design average dry-weather flow treatment capacity of approximately 1.8 million gallons per day." And then farther down on the page here, it says, "The proposed project, when constructed, will expand the plant's average dry-weather flow treatment capacity to 3.5 million gallons per day." It comes out about doubling the size of the sewer plant. And I've tried to get information about the generators and the outflows, and it is like I have to file subpoenas to get it. So I assume that what you told the state is true, and the plant's too big. And instead of spending $38 million, we should have spent more like $19 million. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any other comment on our water rate study? Come on up.
Since I don't have notes or anything, but what I ...
Please don't say your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Ann Mostavoy, and I'm county. I just moved out basically to the north end of Kings Valley Road. And we do have city water, and even though we have our own septic system. But what I would like to see, or I keep hearing that all these things need to be fixed, why can't we hire some of the local people that need jobs desperately to help fix them? Get somebody who oversees what needs to be overseen, and then have the people that need the jobs through RHS or whatever to go out and help dig the ditches. You know, we all call it sweat equity when we do it with our homes. Why not do it with our county? I mean, give it so that we have our own pride and ownership. Say, "This is ours. This is what we did." I mean, that's what our grandfathers did. That's what our grandmothers did. That's what we need to help fix this, not try to increase rates to get things up where people can't afford them, but to help give a hand out and a hand up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come in? Come on up. You'll be next, then.
Steve Wakefield, city resident. And I just want to bring up one fact that Mr. Palazzo alluded to, but I don't think people understand, and that is that your water system affects the cost of your fire insurance in a very adverse way should we lose the water system. And currently, your, this community is rated as a Class IV rating with the insurance industry. And if the water system were to fail, it'll automatically go to a Class IX. And the difference in that cost, I can't quote it directly because every insurance company quotes it differently. I've seen anywhere from 30% or 40% increases in your fire insurance. Just something that everybody should think about before they file their protest, because this could cost them way more than the rate increase. Just something for everybody to know.
Thank you. Ms. Westphal?
Donna Westphal. I live in the city. And first and foremost, I would like to hand in these protests. These are not part of our official count because they're probably throwaways. They include people all the way to Brookings, Oregon, Klamath, P.O. boxes, forgot their addresses, so ...
You can turn it in.
I'll turn it in, but I won't include it as part of our 2,203 protests that I'll hand over to Robin Patch right now.
Thank you.
You've heard a lot of this stuff before, how hard people are having it to, oh, I'm sorry.
Thanks.
So I'm not going to go dwell on that. It's just been my experience that since moving to this community six years ago, the area has champagne taste and a beer budget. And I'm really shocked that the five of you would vote for a pay increase. For who? For you.
When? When you were on the council?
No. You didn't just pass yourself a pay increase?
No.
Oh, okay. Misinformation. Well, there are about half a dozen other issues I'd like to go over. I must have misread something. As commissioners on HUD, you're probably aware that the majority of apartment buildings, large apartment buildings are on HUD, and therefore, the tenant's rent includes water. And so, please consider that. Secondly, I was astounded to hear about a loan in default in January because it just didn't ring a bell. I don't remember discussing loans on the Water Enterprise Fund over the last prior four years. And so I went to my budgets to look for this, and I didn't see anything about a loan in my budgets, but I could have just missed it. Now, it seems to me that when I listen to Susan Mayer talk about raising the rates so that you can have healthy reserves, so that you can go ahead and borrow more money, this to me means a clear definition of insanity. You want to repeat the same things that you've been doing, but you want to expect different You know, you save thousands by removing the HFSA fluoride from the water. Forty-four years, you had that poison in the water. Could have done that a lot earlier. And when it was brought up to council members that it was a corrosive acid, nobody took it seriously enough to do any investigation to see what it does to the pipes.
Okay. Donna, your time is up.
My time's up. Thank you very much.
Thank you for turning that in. Another public comment? Yes. Come on up. Come on up.
My name is Matthew Keim. I live in the county. I have business interest in the city. I learned a couple of things tonight. One, that the water's been running a deficit for the last five years, and apparently, nobody's bothered to do anything about it until now, which is, they say the money's gone. I don't know why we're waiting until the money's gone to address this issue that's been going on for five years. I also learned that my insurance for my home might go up if the water rates don't go up. And my main issue with all this is, living in the county, I have no vote when it comes to the people that are sitting up here. You guys are now going to possibly affect my home insurance, going to affect my water rates. I don't get to vote yes or no for any of you. And to me, this is a tax, and I have no representation at the ballot box for what's going on here, whether I agree with you or disagree with you. The fundamental issue here is taxation without representation. All of us that live in the county, we have no voice here. I've been here before. I'm sure you might remember me. And it was brought up by the other side.
I remember you fondly.
Thank you, Kelly. And it was brought up by the other side that, well, he lives in the county. He's not in your district. He doesn't vote. And that's right. And that's not the American way. I don't understand why the rest of the people in the county aren't upset about this. If you're going to get into our pockets, possibly affect our insurance rates, we should have a voice on who sits on the city council, whether we live in the county or not. If we have any business interest in the city, we need to have a voice and not just standing here talking because you can, you know, forget about me two seconds after I leave. I want to be able to vote for you or against you. That's all.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak?
Jessica Salisbury, Crescent City. Welcome to the USA Urban Service Area. Yeah, boy, that kind of brings into perspective the carrot and the stick that we wield. Time to start annexing some of the county, maybe? Listening to the city, all I can say is that, you know, talking about coming back with whatever happens if the numbers pass and the proposition fails. Coming back with information, it's like, where's the due diligence? Why wasn't this done before? We seem to have all these scenarios of, you know, doom and gloom about what's going to happen. I mean, it's kind of like a fear campaign, but then when it comes to, well, what can we actually do about it? What other ways could we cut? That's just not there. And it seems like a lot of information has been out there in the paper. I just couldn't, I mean, not that I buy the triplicate. But the stories that I saw in there that my city council members had in there, I thought there were three-quarters garbage, and it was just, there was really no substance. It was just a bunch of rhetoric. I got a feeling that this is going to, that this isn't going to fly. And I'm sorry to see that we weren't able to discuss this and come to a better conclusion than to have you guys come up with a rate structure by this Will Dan company who, Waldan, whatever their name is, to just shove this down our throat instead of coming before us and discussing a way that we could work this out. Obviously, you guys have taken way more time than you should have coming up with a plan to stop the $350,000 to $500,000 deficit per year in the water. But this slamming it down our throat all at one time is just, it puts a really bad taste in my mouth. And then to extrapolate it five years into the future without continuing to slam it down our throat, that really leaves a bad taste in my mouth.
Thank you. Is there any other comment?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Ellen Hawken. I live at 982 H Street, Crescent City. I would like to say this rate increase is going to be very difficult for me. I am a fixed income. And when the water sewer rates went up, I gave up the paper. When they went up again, I gave up all magazine subscriptions. When they went up again, I gave up my internet. Now, it seems to me that the city should be able to give up a few things if they're going to keep charging us for things that we've been paying on time regularly for the last 40 years. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other comments? Okay, yes, come on up, sir.
My name is Blakeens. Square. I'm a city resident. Mr. Mayor, Council, I realize that you have faced a very difficult situation, and it's a pretty untenable situation. I would offer just a couple of observations. Number one, simple admission that this has been kicked down the road way too many times for far too long, mismanagement on council standpoint, on city staff standpoint, which has put us here. Sometimes just willingness to take responsibility and say, "Hey, we're the ones sitting in the chair now. It may have not been my decision, but we're here now. We take responsibility, but we have to do something." That's one side. The other side is, is while we have many people who are very impassioned about this because of the cost, I just want to remind everyone, even if the city cut $642,000 out of the budget right now and saved all the money, we still don't fix a darn thing. We don't fix anything. None of the capital improvements can be made because we have no preparation for future debt. We have no preparation to put money aside to be able to do these things. I mean, so everybody says, "Well, just the city's got to give up some things." That's probably a good idea. It probably is. You probably do need to cut some things across the board. But even if we cut all of that right now, whatever that took, we still don't get to fix a single pipe. We don't get to patch a single hole in a tank. So while it is something to be impassioned about, the reality is, is you've got to do business. All of us have to. I just implore you as the council, as our city staff, take responsibility, say, "Yep, it's been screwed up in the past. We're trying to do the best we can right now. We understand the pain that you feel. We are going to relook at our budget. We are going to make some cuts where we can. But we have to do this for our long-term future because we didn't do it when it should have been done before." Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment before I close? Okay. That's the end of the public comment. I'll bring it back up to the council for comments. If they have any at this time?
I have a lot.
Okay. And then, before we start, excuse me. Then we'll take a short break when we're done here, and then we'll come back, in case anybody wants to turn in any papers. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Palazzo, I'm sorry.
It's time to close the public hearing.
Oh, yes. Public hearing's closed, and so if you have any last-minute protest to bring up, please bring them up. Go ahead, council member. Sorry.
That's all right. So when it was shown on the PowerPoint about different, difficult policy choices in the future, I can tell you, I can assure you that this decision right now is extremely difficult for us to even bring up. Other councils in the past have not done that for different things, and now everyone's paying the price. So, you know, this is, it's not any fun for us. And we want to do what's best for the city and inform ourselves. So until ... I wanted to address some of the comments. People are not forced to use city water. It's a benefit to you. So I'm, you know, if you don't like having city water, then don't live in an area where that's what we offer. We have annexed, we have annexed ...
Quiet. Good.
The Roosevelt area, for example, when their water system failed, it's costing us money. They didn't have any infrastructure for roads or lights or anything, and we're still paying for being a good guy and giving, offering them city water because their system failed. We have cut expenses, a lot of them, and it would have been beneficial for those of you who think that we need to cut more to have attended our budget workshops or looked at previous budgets and where we cut and the current budget and where we've cut. I do understand that this is a hardship on everyone. I don't have a lot of money myself. I, and I, you know, my profession is a social worker, and I've served a lot of needy people in our community. So if you think that I don't understand what people without any money are going through, I can tell you firsthand. I've been in their homes. I've been in their temporary housing shelters. I've been in the low-income apartments and hotels, and it's no picnic. And my heart goes out to the children. But we need to, we need to do this. It's just not any fun, but that's what we have to face. A lot of our staff provides work on projects. We've done a lot of things. So we are hiring local. When someone said that we should hire local people, we do. And our city staff has done an incredible job with less people through attrition and saved us a lot of money. And then one person talked about taxation without representation. This is not true in this case. You do have a vote with the Prop 218. So if you're not a city resident and you spend, you have city water, you still have a voice in this matter. And I guess that's about it.
Okay. Any other council comments at this time? Did you have some, Mr. Hall?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. First, I want to thank the staff for putting together another exemplary presentation for us. I think that's important for us all to see really why we're here. And I agree, Mr. Innescore, the council should have made these moves a long time ago. At the same time, I think the council should get some credit for not having done so because the users received the benefit of this delay over a period of over 10 years. So I, when you look at the numbers and you realize that, I'm sorry that the gentleman left that said my letter was garbage. I didn't mean for it to be garbage in the triplicate. My interest was to show that water should be a priority in all of our lives. My interest was to show that, that water should be a priority in all of our lives. And I, yeah, there was a little philosophical wandering, but it was important to point out that it's, it's essential for the health and safety of this community to have water. Without water, we have no business, no businesses. Without water, our homes are worth nothing. And I, I, I just think that, that I, I understand that this is, this is a, a large percentage increase for our residents, but at the same time, in comparison to other regions, uh, it's a reasonable rate. When I, when I share the rate structure that I have with, with people that I know from other areas outside of this region, they're stunned that there would be this much protest regarding, uh, what, at least in the first year, it amounts to about a six-dollar increase for a residential customer. So, uh, I, I, I would hope that anyone doing a protest will take a second look at those protests in the future, and, uh, I, I really hope we can get through this and move on to other things. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Schlong?
Sure. So, I agree with a lot of things that have been said this evening. The rate increase is difficult for me, too. I'm a single mom on a single income, and I understand, um, how hard times are right now. But I also understand how important it is for us to have clean water. A lot of us, I think, we probably take it, take, uh, take it for granted every morning when we go to the kitchen and turn on the water faucet, um, or we are able to flush our toilets. That's, um, something that we, um, just have the ability to do every day, and I'm thankful for that, and I know you probably are, too. When you think about ten dollars versus sixteen dollars to have that, uh, benefit every single day, it doesn't seem like that big of a deal. But when you add it all together with your sewer, it does, it is a large bill every month. So I get that. Mr. Enscore mentioned us cutting costs. This is my seventh year on the council, and, uh, I can't tell you how difficult it is to, um, to manage our budget every single year and decide what will, what we fund and what we don't fund and how it's gonna have the most impact and benefit the most people in our city. And we're not, we're not talking about, you know, making cuts to, um, things in general. We're talking about, should we, you know, should we fund fixing, um, you know, the, the piece of equipment that isn't, uh, operating correctly anymore? Should we fund another police officer? They're very, very difficult situ, uh, decisions that we make every single year in our budget. Can we cut more? Of course, we can cut more, but I'm not sure where. And it's, it's not an easy decision to make. So we don't have a lot of extra money that is just, that we're spending frivolously. I just wanted to say that. David, you know, you and I toured the wastewater treatment plant together years ago when it was first, um, being, um, rebuilt. I'm not sure where you're coming up with, we are getting fined on our treatment plant right now. Um, so if, if you have information that I don't have, I'd be happy to chat with you after the meeting. Okay. Matt, I agree with you. I've agreed with you and anybody else since day one. I believe that people that have a business in the city limits should have a, a say on the city council, who's, you know, who's running the city. Unfortunately, it's not the law, but I agree with you. We've, we've gotten grants, um, but actually going out and finding grants to pay for people's water isn't an easy grant to find. I've actually had Congressman Thompson in the room before, uh, when we were going through this very difficult process with the wastewater treatment plant water rate, I mean sewer rate increases, and I asked him point-blank, are there any grants out there that we can find or that can help subsidize low-income people? It's actually illegal for us to subsidize anybody when it comes to a utility such as water or sewer that is operated by the government. The, the last thing I wanted to say is, is I don't look at this as a tax. We are, you know, everybody looks at us like we're here to take your money, and that's not the case. We're here to provide you with a service, and, uh, one of the most important things, I think, that we provide is water. And I think we are asking for, uh, the rates that you pay to pay for the service and the product that we're providing you. And I say, we, I don't mean the five of us sitting up here, I mean the city in, in its entirety. That's one of our jobs, is to provide you with clean water. Unfortunately, it's expensive. Everything that we do has gotten more expensive, and the state has taken more and more money away from us. So we do a very difficult job every day. We want to do, I want to do a good job. I don't want to raise your rates, but it's the reality. Um, and so I just wanted to say that the water is, I, I believe, a, a fee that we are paying for and not a tax. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a few comments, and then we'll, we'll move on. The, um, everyone had some, um, good comments tonight on, on what the city is doing, and, uh, it's, it is too bad that people don't come to more meetings when we're doing our budget because we, we go through this, it's very difficult. You know, it's, it's interesting where Crescent City is, and I think it's one of the very few cities in the state of California that has a water service, and only one-third of the users are in the city. Two-thirds of the users of our water are in the county. And the county chose to do that and not have a water system, just like the sewer system. They chose to contract with the city. And that's the reason that's where it is today. You know, on, on, um, the one lady, she left, she spoke about HUD. HUD, HUD Housing for People, HUD has a utility fee that they pay. So it's not gonna affect the people that are in HUD Housing. The government has a subsidy, and they raise it as rates are raised. We can't do that as a city. HUD can do that, it's federal government. And they do that throughout the United States. And actually, the rates here are very low to what they subsidize. And so people that live in HUD Housing, their rates are taken care of.
I don't think they're actually taken care of.
Utility fee.
They get a, they get a subsidy, um,
Yes.
for their utilities, but it's just a-
They get a utility allowance.
It's just a portion of what their utility is.
It pays for a lot of it. It pays for a lot of it. And so then the, the, we are, like Kelly said, we are always looking for grants. That one loan that we have now in the water fund is a zero percent interest grant from the state. But you can imagine with four hundred and thirty-five cities in the state, they're all looking for grants. And so we try all the time to get grants. The, uh, as far as the city, what we're doing, we've reduced our staff from seventy employees to fifty-five. We did it through attrition. We have a very bare-bones staff, and we asked them to do more, our employees. They took a pay cut this year. We have, we've done everything that other cities are doing. Our water rates, and Mr. Enscore, you had a valid, very valid point there, that's exactly what we're trying to do. We are taking responsibility because that's what happened to our wastewater plant. It wasn't maintained, and we had to pay for it. Now our water, we have been using reserves up until the last couple of years. We don't have any more money in our reserves, and so we have to raise the rates just to get a loan to fix it. Because we don't wanna raise rates. We, that's the absolute last thing we want to do, but now the time has come to do it. We have three different budgets in the city. We have the general fund budget, we have the water budget, and we have the sewer budget. And there are three separate budgets. Now, we can take money out of the general fund. If we do that, we, we have to reduce other things that we have. Public safety, health and safety, our pool, our parks, we could do that. That's the last thing I would wanna do because we should support our other budgets. It's just part of the cost of living in this country, and I think we've kept our rates really, really low. And I know people complain that it's gonna go up, but it's not going up very much compared to other cities, and we have to do this work, or we wouldn't raise it. We wouldn't want to raise it if we didn't have to do it. Those are, those are my comments.
I wanted to comment on something you said really quickly.
Sure.
And it, something I wanted to say earlier, and I forgot. You know, some of the comments about us waiting to raise these rates until now, um, was a mistake, and I partially agree with you. The water fund has been taking money out of the reserves over several years. And so maybe we should have looked at raising the rates prior to now. However, we were in the middle of doing a huge multimillion-dollar wastewater treatment plant expansion where we were raising the rates. And it was, it's very hard, we're a very small city with a very small staff. It's very hard to look at multiple very large projects all at the same time and go out to your ratepayers and try to raise the rates for the sewer and the water all at once. So I, the way I look at it is, we were, you know, kind of handling the sewer issue, which was a several-year project, um, and a very, very, very controversial and difficult, uh, project to get through, and now we're looking at our next priority, which is our water system. So you can kinda look at it both ways. We could've raised the rates earlier, but it would've been difficult to do at the same time we were raising sewer rates, plus the ratepayers have had a couple of years of not having those rates raised, and here we are today.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to the next item on our agenda while we're waiting. It's under new business, item number six, and that's received proposition fifty funding update and considering approving a resolution two thou, two zero one-three dash twenty-eight, resolution authorizing a budget amendment to reflect the receipt and proposed expenditure of position funds and authorize the city manager to sign an agreement with Kennedy Jinx Consultants in the amount of nineteen thousand, nine hundred dollars and direct staff to proceed with the RFP for screening equipment. Mr. Polazzo?
Mayorania, I'd like to, uh, have Mr. Weir, you know, discuss this item.
Come on up, Mr. Weir.
Uh, yes, this is a, uh, this is actually a good example of one of the, uh, grant opportunities that the city was successful in obtaining. Um, so tonight I wanna give you an update on the Prop fifty funds. This has been in the works for, uh, for a few years now, and it's taken a few twists and turns. So first I'll recap, you know, where we've, where we've been, and then we'll talk about where we are, and then we'll talk about where we're, where we're going with these funds. In two thousand and seven, the city was successful in obtaining nine hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars from Proposition Fifty. Proposition Fifty originally set out to, uh, to recycle water or reuse some of the water. Our treatment plant, through the upgrades, uh, at the treatment plant, allowed us to have the quality of water that we could reuse, say, in the parks. This fund was, uh, was originally supposed to go to an irrigation project in the park. Uh, as we worked through that project and it, uh, and some of the details came a little bit more clear, that project was no longer feasible with the amount of funds, and it would've placed a, uh, a burden on the city that was, uh, far and above, beyond the, the benefit of actually recycling that water. Uh, so we then moved on, and, uh, it was discussed with the council that we were going to, uh, propose to use those funds to actually reuse that water with a heating system at the pool. It was gonna be a geothermal heating system, uh, actually quite a good project. As we were working through with the Proposition Fifty coordinators and the details of those projects, it became apparent that that project really wasn't eligible under the Proposition Fifty guidelines. City manager Gene Plaza, myself, took a trip to Sacramento to talk with the coordinators about the project and to see, uh, what other options were out there. Uh, as it, as we worked through the, uh, stipulations of the grant, it became apparent that there were eligible costs for the wastewater treatment plant that were not, uh, first apparent, and were not covered by SRF. So with the nine hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, what we're, uh, what we're working through with the Proposition Fifty coordinators, and it looks very likely that we will actually be able to receive approximately about five hundred and thirty-three thousand, I remember right, in funds, uh, for expenses that we've already incurred on the wastewater treatment plant. So we've invoiced the state and are waiting to hear back on, on that one. Uh, this leaves approximately four hundred thousand dollars left in the Proposition Fifty. What we've talked to them about is using the four hundred thousand to actually complete one of the capital improvement projects that we have on our capital improvement list for the, for the wastewater treatment plant. This project that we've, uh, worked out with the coordinators is to, uh, upgrade the screening system at the headworks. Currently, right now, rocks and gravel get into the current, uh, screening grinding unit, and it basically disables the unit. So what we need to do is we need to add a, a screening unit to it in, uh, in the form of a bar screen that will actually remove the, the route, the gravel and the rocks and the rags before it goes through the treatment plant process. Uh, so this will, uh, really help our efficiencies and also will help the plant in general with some of the maintenance costs and whatnot that we have. Stipulations on it, however. Timing, this grant has been in the works for, for many years, they've extended it as long as they can. All funds have to be spent before March thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen. It's now November. That leaves us basically five months to, uh, to get this project off the ground and get it going. Uh, we feel we can do this, but it's a very tight timeline. So that's why we're asking the council tonight to go ahead and approve a contract with Kennedy Jinx. Uh, they're an engineering firm that, that was involved in the treatment plant project. They understand the, uh, the headworks operations, and they can help us select a screen that would be most efficient and effective for our particular plant. We're also working with them, and it just so happens that they're completing a similar project for the city of Petaluma, where they're working on a screening project for, for them, so we can actually come in on the coattails and, uh, and save quite a bit of money in working with them on this project. So with this, we're asking the council to authorize the contract with Kennedy Jinx to help us select the correct, the correct screen, and then authorize staff to go out for an RFP so that we can most efficiently go out and get proposals back for the screening system. Uh, so then our intent to put this out, it'll only be out for a couple of weeks, and then we'll bring that contract back to the council for approval.
Any council comments? Yes.
I was just gonna ask, what made you decide on these two projects?
The, the screening project is the one that we're going to, to go ahead and, and go forward with at the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, that project was part of our capital improvement project. It best met the original intent of the grant, now that grant was written, to improve, uh, the influent pumping system. And so in working with the Prop fifty coordinators, this was a, a vital project. It was also one of the most important projects that we have on our capital improvement plan. This project was slated for fourteen fifteen, and it would've required us to go out and get debt financing, but we're able to incorporate these funds to pay for. And it'll be no net impact to the city's budget, completely paid for with grant funds.
Any other comments?
I just wanna acknowledge how exciting this is. The first part of the conversation, that was that five hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars is going to back, go back into the sewer budget. Uh, and, uh, I appreciate your advocacy in, in Sacramento because that's really what made that happen. So, thank you very much for that.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Weir.
Is that a bet?
Any public comment on item number, uh, six under new business? Okay, seeing that, I'll, I'll close that and bring it back up. Is there a motion or a further comment?
Um, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty thirteen twenty-eight, and we scroll down to, um, to, um, authorizing a budget amendment to reflect the receipt and proposed expenditure on Proposition Fifty funds for a capital improvement plan project for the wastewater treatment facility, um, plants, head, headworks, influent, screening system, which I think is a wise choice.
Sir, it's been moved and seconded. Would you pull the vote, please?
Uh, I think-
Well, I'm sorry, you have a question?
I think that you also need to authorize a city manager to sign the contract for nineteen-nine.
Was that included?
I, I thought it was a separate item, 'cause, oh, I don't know, let me look. Okay, and I'll, I'll add, um, recommend, recommendation number five to authorize a city manager to sign the agreement with Kennedy Jinx.
And, and item six as well.
And item six, direct, direct staff to proceed with the RFP for the screening equipment.
Still second?
Still second.
Okay. Would you pull the vote?
Councilmember Schlong? Yes. Councilmember Gastinow?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Holly?
Yes.
And Mayorania.
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Weir, for doing that. Okay, we're gonna go to, uh, city council items. First is legislative matters. Do you have any legislative matters, Mr.?
I do not.
Polazzo, okay.
I do have some city manager report, though.
Okay, city manager's report, we'll go to that.
Uh, Mayor, members of council, I have, uh, three items to update, or, or, uh, update you on, and two of those items, I'm gonna ask Mr. Weir to come to the podium. Uh, the first one, though, is I've been, uh, asked by the county to set up a, a two-by-two meeting with two council members, uh, to just go over, you know, city-county issues. I think this is in response to, you know, grand jury, uh, request. What I would recommend with the council is to just, you know, appoint, you know, two people at this time, uh, we can kinda go through that process, and as, uh, we move through the year in, uh, into December, January, uh, we'll be reassigning committees so we can, uh, kinda discuss if we wanna- January, we'll be reassigning committees so we can kind of discuss if we want to continue that on a more permanent basis at that time.
So we'll have probably just one meeting. I'd like to appoint Mr. Holly as the mayor of Protam, and I'll go also for this meeting. And then if it continues into January, we'll, the mayor will appoint a two-by-two committee. We need to go to have another committee. Any other comments on it? Okay with everyone? Okay. That was part of the grand jury recommendation, too.
That's great. The other two items are real positive items, are some updates on projects, the Second Street Sewer Project and our drainage system analysis. And I'd like to ask Mr. Weir to give a brief presentation. These projects are started today, and so we want to make sure the community, take this opportunity for the council and the community to be aware of these significant projects.
Mr. Weir?
Yes, we had two project meetings earlier this morning to commence two of the projects that we've talked about here in the past. The first was a storm drain inspection project in which we're going to go through and inspect seventeen thousand millennial feet of the city's storm drain. This is a project that we've needed for some time, and it'll give us a better understanding of the priorities within the general fund and the capital improvement projects that are needed there. So as a community, what you'll see is you'll see two big trucks going around town. One is a vector truck for the storm drain, the other one is a camera truck, where they'll actually sit in the back and they'll run a high-definition camera down the storm drains to assess the condition.
Saw them on Fifth Street this morning.
Yes, they started on Fifth, and they'll be working their way into the downtown. There won't be any official street closures on that, but there will be one-way traffic control during the time that they're doing the inspections. The second project, which we've talked about many times, and we're very excited to have commencing, and actually starts tomorrow, will be the Second Street Sewer Rehabilitation Project. They're going to start with their dewatering activities, and then they'll follow with the cambering of the lines, and then they'll actually get into the pipe replacement here in a couple of weeks. To do these activities, though, they're going to need to close Second Street between B Street and F Street from tomorrow until probably mid-January sometime. There will be a few cross streets that are open. E Street is the first planned cross street to be open, as well as B Street will remain open until that time when they actually do work in the intersection. So we will do our best to keep the public updated with PSAs. This hopefully will make the radio tomorrow with the street closure announcement. I'll also be working with the Triple Kit to keep them up to date, as well as our city website will have a weekly update with the status.
Good. Good. Any other thing, anything else, Mr. Blazzo?
That's all we have to report, Mayor.
Okay, we'll go to council reports. Who'd like to start? Mr. Gastineau, would you like to start?
Well, see, visitor's bureau, we've been not having too many meetings lately, but it's, we're going to have some here pretty soon. The main thing that I did was yesterday, I helped out the pool, raised some funds for, was that for the swim team or was that for the pool directly?
That was for the pool. And actually, if I can just add, it's a thousand fifty dollars.
No, a thousand fifty dollars. Excellent. It was the first, hopefully, annual zombie-run fundraiser. And besides myself, who was a zombie, and I paid my twenty-five dollars to be a zombie, I saw Mayor Nye out there, and he was as scary as me as well. But he wasn't dressed up.
Are you finished?
Yeah. But it was a good experience. There was a lot of people out there. There's probably about sixty to seventy people altogether, zombies and runners. And everybody had a fun time, nobody got hurt, and it was a beautiful day. So a nice event for our city, enhances the community, and is a fun time.
And the event raised about a thousand fifty dollars for the pool, which will go to its operation.
That's good. Councilmember Schlong?
First, I wanted to say I was very sorry to hear that Mr. Roberts resigned from the planning commission. And was it true he resigned as of today or as of?
Friday.
From November first, that is correct.
Okay. So what's the plan, Stan?
We will go and advertise, you know, for an opening or a vacancy on the planning commission and bring that back to the council.
Also, just thinking tonight about several of the comments about the city should go out and get a grant, I thought we've actually done a lot of that, and maybe it would be beneficial to actually create a matrix of all the grants that we've secured and the projects that those grants have benefited as a public document for people to be able to see.
That's a great idea, and we can even post something like that on our website.
Yeah. We just had a really successful sea cruise. I sit on the chamber board of directors. We had three hundred and seventy-six cars. So, you know, lots of people in town and spending their dollars in hotels and gas stations and grocery stores. Everybody seemed to have a very good time. There were no significant events, nothing negative. The dance was packed with a new band this year, and there was over a fifty percent increase in revenue for the dance this year. We had our wrap-up meeting today that Chief Plack attended and myself attended, and the only suggestion that the group had for this city was that the actual road that goes into the park, that the cars travel down to enter the park, you know, the little gravel roadway that had a lot of potholes, and some of the, you know, those really beautiful expensive cars had a tough time. And so that maybe we could take a look at that in the future before sea cruise. Everybody was really positive and had, it was just a really great event. And then also, I've also been, as you all know, seated to represent the council on the Sutter Coast Hospital Camden Group Strategic Options Study. We are finished after several months of meetings that I think were very productive and very transparent and very informative. I learned a lot. And as I told the Triple Kit last week, whether you are for or against, or you believe everything that was said prior to today, or you didn't believe, I think that what happened was very important for our community. And what Dr. Duncan and some of the other physicians brought forward was a forum for people to actually engage in a huge issue for our community. And I think that it got, it helped people engage and become informed and be educated. So, you know, a lot of it was confidential information, but I have to tell you that a lot of times, you know, what you hear or what you see on the surface seems really alarming when you just hear or see pieces of it. So we were able to actually see, you know, all the information, not all the information, I'm sure, but a lot more information, and really understand the current regulations in the healthcare industry that affect the hospital and its governing, its governance and its politics and its financial situation. And I think that, I'm sorry, what?
Oh, I said, just clarifying. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. I think that the information that you're going to be presented tomorrow in a public webinar is going to be good information, and I wanted to share that with you if you have an interest in the outcome that is being presented to their board of directors for consideration. That webinar is tomorrow at eleven o'clock in the morning, and I believe all you have to do is go onto the Sutter Coast website, which is suttercoast.org, and you can watch that presentation. Where it goes from there is up to the board of directors. But I do feel like as an elected official that I am pleased with the fact that I was, we chose to have a voice. Because I can tell you that what started out as a fairly short process that was going to consist of a few meetings turned into several months of very long nights and additional meetings at the request of our group to find out more information. So whether or not the outcome is a great one or a bad one, I feel like we had a voice and we were able to be educated. So just one positive thing to that process.
Thank you. Councilmember Murray?
Speaking of Mr. Roberts, I was wondering if we could send him a thank you letter for his service, if everyone agrees?
Yes, that's a good idea.
I sent him an email earlier, and I wanted, this is, I got a little bit discombobulated with my false start for public comment for the water. So I just wanted to thank our city staff and for helping us to be more proactive. Until recent councils, we were always on the reactive defensive mode and had to respond and react to any kind of crises, whether it was big or little. And thanks to the city staff for helping us to get to having a strategic plan, having a capital improvement plan that aligns with our budget every year. We know what we need, we know how to do it, and I think that the staff gets a lot of kudos for that, so thank you. And then I wanted to remind everyone that Veterans Day is next Monday, and we'll have a parade, and I hope a lot of people will come out to honor our veterans, including those that, well, they're still serving and their families. So I think that's really important. I attended the Delnart Solid Waste Authority meeting on the 23rd of October as a part of the audience, and they adopted a new revised RFP. Mr. Longsdell had a big hand in that, thank you, for evaluating the solid waste authority. And I did something fun on the 25th. I went to Delnart High's homecoming game, and it was freezing, and we didn't do so well, but it's nice to honor our kids and coaches and school staff. And then I attended the local agency formation commission meeting, and we are assisting the Delnart County Fairgrounds in how to become economically viable, and that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Longsdell.
Thank you. First, I want to say I'm grateful for the council's bravery and leadership in participating in the Camden Study, and specifically, I'd like to thank Kelly for putting yourself kind of in harm's way during this process. We know that this is a politically difficult thing for us to do, but I think it was important, and I'm glad we were represented, so thank you, Kelly. I attended the Solid Waste Management Authority meeting where we're actively seeking a consultant to look at the authority's operations, and those RFPs have gone out now, so we're waiting to see what kind of a response we get. I, too, attended the local agency formation commission, and the activities, especially related to the fair district forming a special district, are very interesting. I also had the privilege of attending and meeting the Japanese delegation that was here in relationship to the tsunami boat that was shipped to Japan, and those gentlemen were presented gifts, and I understand they included the keys to the city. I don't know if they opened up anything, but they-
I asked them if I could switch. Here, let me give you my keys to the city.
But we really appreciated their being here from San Francisco. It was an honor to have them here, and I know that they did other things in our community, but a few of us had an opportunity to participate in that, and I thank everyone for that opportunity. So that's all I-
Thank you. Yes, the Japanese delegation that came was very happy with our city and thanked us again and again for keeping that boat and shipping the boat back to them. And there'll be, what, nine members of the high school going to Japan in February to Sutter School, I believe?
Actually, let me give you a little update on that. So I actually attended that as well, and then I actually went to the high school where the Japanese general consulate went and met the kids in their group that's going to Japan. But they're also sending five additional children from the high school from the agricultural department. Because I guess the high school that they're taking the boat to is, has a big agricultural department. And so they're going to start some kind of a sister kind of relationship, and there's a nonprofit in Japan that has given them the money, like several thousand dollars, to help pay for these additional kids to go to Japan. So it's really great. And the kids at the high school, they, the Japanese gentleman were special guests for an assembly, and the kids were so excited. And I've never seen, they were like, they were clapping. They couldn't understand anything he said, but they were clapping, they were so excited, and they felt so good for being a part of that process. And the Japanese consulate, he was very moved, very deeply moved by the friendship shown by the students. And so it was a really, really cool thing to watch.
His name's Watanabe.
Yeah, Mr. Watanabe. Okay, and the only thing I wanted to say, Mr. Blazzo, is that I've received a lot of favorable comments on the blight cleanup going in town, and I'd like to thank the city staff and all the work that they're doing, and ongoing staff, because the sound is looking a lot nicer. With that, we are going to go into recess and wait until, wait for a while until we hear from our city clerk, Robin Pat. So we'll be in recess for a while. We're going to go back into closed session, but we'll be out as soon as we hear anything. Thank you.
I just want to report to you guys that at this current moment, we are at number eight hundred and twelve. We still have several to go, and I want to say this in open record, I said this to Mr. Stetson as well as to Ms. Sutter, that the uncounted protests, as well as the counted protests, are in this container and are going to City Hall tonight and will be placed in my safe.
All right. And when will you resume the count?
We're going to resume the count at eight-thirty tomorrow morning at the wastewater treatment plant conference room.
Okay.
And I've invited those two to join us if they'd like.
Okay, good. All right. So then we're going to adjourn our meeting to November 12th, Tuesday, at 5:00 PM here to get the results of the 218 protest. I think that's the right ad.
Will that work for all council members?
Does that work for all council members? A week from tomorrow at, well, half 6:00 PM. Would you rather make it 5:00 or 6:00?
I just found out about that today, so I have to check my work schedule.
Okay.
You can do it without me if I'm not available.
So we'll make it at, would you rather have it 5:00 or 6:00? Any preference?
You want to do Monday instead?
Monday's a holiday.
Monday's a holiday, but-
I'm available Monday if you wanted to do it on a holiday.
No, I don't.
Okay. So we'll do it on, we'll do it on Tuesday, and we'll leave it at 6:00 PM for Tuesday, November 12th. We'll continue-
You're here or in the building?
No, it'll be here. We can get the, the building's available, right?
I don't have it.
Okay, and we'll continue, we'll be continuing item number five, adjourning this meeting to, oh, wait, no, if it's, the 12th, seven days.
Yeah, you'll have to continue it. I think that we're going to end up, we'll also renotice it as a special meeting.
Okay. So we're going to continue this meeting until Tuesday, November 12th, 6:00 PM, here in the council chambers, the board chambers, and we'll continue with item number five at that time. Yes?
We can have a closed session.
There's no need for a closed session. No, we'll convene at 6:00 PM. Is that correct?
I would leave open the possibility.
Okay, we'll put that on there, then we'll leave it at, a closed session at 5:00 if we need it, and otherwise we'll convene at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, the 12th. Thank you for staying. All right. All right.